Good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Dera?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes from September 7th?
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. And looking at any agenda revisions tonight, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I do have two special presentations tonight. The first, we have joining us John Clapton, Civil Service Commissioner. Mr. Clapton has been serving in that role since 2005. Recently announced his resignation from that. And due to his length of service and his contributions to that very important commission, I'm very pleased to present virtually to him a City of Cedar Falls Distinguished Service Award. So, Mr. Clapton, this reads, and we will provide this to you when you're in town, says, "The City of Cedar Falls presents to John Clapton a distinguished service award in appreciation for the meritorious contribution to the City of Cedar Falls while serving on the Civil Service Commission awarded on the 20th day of September 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green." Again, this is in recognition of 16 years of service for Mr. Clapton. So, we'd like to have everyone give you a round of applause. And, Mr. Clapton, the floor is yours. Do you have some words of wisdom for us?
Well, I don't know about words of wisdom, but I would like to say to you that throughout my time on the commission, any contributions that I made were done so as a team member with great commissioners and great employees. And so, I appreciate the work that you do, Mr. Mayor, and the city council. I thank you for this appreciation. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clapton, especially for your time as the chair, because I know how difficult it can be to be a presiding officer of a commission or group. So, thank you for providing your insights and your expertise to the Civil Service Commission, and we wish you the very best in the years ahead. So, let's thank them again. My second presentation tonight is in honor of Fire Prevention Week, so I'll come out to the front here.
So, again, this is in honor?
In honor of Fire Prevention Week, this was requested by the Public Safety Department. Fire Prevention Week, October 3rd through 9th, 2021. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both nationally and locally, and homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk of fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms can sense smoke well before you can, alerting to the danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Cedar Falls residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with disabilities. And whereas, Cedar Falls fire responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety", effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all residents to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention 2021 and to support the fire prevention and education activities of Cedar Falls Fire Rescue through this week and all other times of the year. Signed this 13th day of September 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green. So, Chief, do you have a few words for us tonight?
Mayor Green, thank you for the proclamation. National Fire Prevention Association's long history of promoting fire safety throughout the country. Each year, they have a new message for the fire departments. This year, the message of "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety" reminds us about the differing sounds of smoke alarms. One of these sounds is the chirp that a fire, a smoke alarm makes when the battery's getting low. The other one is the beeping sound that we have all heard when there's smoke or fire in the house. Each of these sounds are important parts of fire safety for your family. Right now, firefighters are finalizing our plans for, to bring the community more information about fire safety during Fire Prevention Week. If you have any questions about your smoke alarms or any fire-related or fire safety questions, please contact Fire Rescue at 273-8612. And one of our firefighters would be glad to help you 24/7, any day of the week, anytime. They'd be glad to help you out. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Boswick. So, moving on into public forum, speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Does anyone from the gallery wish to speak in public forum tonight? Seeing none for the gallery, do we have any on Zoom tonight?
No one in Zoom.
Okay. Last call in the gallery. Alright, so that will close public forum and bring us over to our special order of business. The first is item four, "A Public Hearing on the Proposed Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost for the 2021 Street Patching Project." Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And do we have any written communications filed, Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, that moves us over into part C, Staff Comments. We have Brett Armstrong tonight to help lead us through that. So, Mr. Armstrong, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Green and City Council. Tonight's public hearing is for the 2021 Street Patching Project. This project involves the construction of 46 utility patches on existing city streets. Work shall include roughly 644 square yards of removal and replacement of existing pavement, 118 tons of asphalt patches, 105 linear feet of concrete curb and gutter, and replacement of driveway approaches and pedestrian ramps. The total estimated cost for the construction of this project is $288,409.85. And this project is funded by Cedar Falls Utilities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Armstrong. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on the street patching project tonight? Seeing none in the gallery, any on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. So, I'll consider the public hearing closed for this item and move us over to part 4E, which is a resolution approving and adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2021 Street Patching Project. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and seconded? Any council discussion? Seeing none. Then it's been motion and seconded, and it requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item five, which is "A Public Hearing on the Proposed Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost for the Recreational River Area and Riverbank Improvements Project." Is there a motion to receive and file, proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications for this item?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with this item for 5C, we have Mr. Dave Wiki, a city engineer, to provide comments on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Green, City Council. Tonight's public hearing is on the Recreational River Area and Riverbank Improvement Project. And you can see on your screen right there, this is sort of the conceptual layout, sort of outlines some of the key features of this project. And what this project intends to do is to construct eight in-stream water features, upland improvements within and on the banks of the Cedar River. The project also aims to improve and stabilize the riverbank, provide access to the river. It'll feature plazas, walking paths, terrace seating, several jetties. The jetties are designed to create these watercourses for kayakers and other users. There'll be put-ins on both sides of the river and also to take out downstream at the end. Landscaping plans will also be included as part of the project. The total estimated cost for this project is $3,758,000. And the city will utilize general obligation bonds, Black Hawk Gaming Grant, emergency reserves, and tourism cash reserves, and also private donations for this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiki. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on the Riverbanks Improvement Project? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lou Fennick, and I've been living in the Cedar Heights area for the last 25 years. And I live at 2126 Hickory Lane. If you'll all indulge me, I've prepared a couple of comments. They'll take approximately two minutes to say.
Certainly, you have five minutes.
Firstly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors, for listening to me. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of the proposed Downtown Character District.
Well, and that's a different item?
Oh, it is.
Yes, sir. So, I'll be happy to bring you back up for that one.
Thank you.
And it'll be just next item up here. Good. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the Riverbank Improvements Project? Okay, seeing none there. Any on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. So, it's been motion and seconded, or excuse me, I'll close the public hearing and bring us over to item, or 5E, which is "The Resolution Approving and Adopting the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost for the Riverbank Area and Riverbank Improvements Project." Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion for this? Seeing none, then it's been motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, that takes us into old business, which that first part is item six, Passing Ordinance 2994, Amending Chapter 26's Zoning and Other Associated Sections of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Establishing the CD DT Downtown Character District Upon Its Second Consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and seconded. Before going into council discussion, I know we have a couple of public comments for this, including Mr. Fennick. And so, if council indulge, I understand six and seven really are tied together. We'll vote on them separately, but if you'll just allow, probably some of the conversation will go into both topics, so just be aware of that. So, Mr. Fennick, would you like to come forward at this time?
Thank you again, everyone, and I apologize. So, once again, I'm speaking tonight in support of the proposed Downtown Character District. My wife and I attended a number of meetings in 2019 regarding the Imagine Downtown Vision Plan that provided a general conceptual layout for development in and around downtown Cedar Falls. We're very excited to see that the Downtown Vision concept has developed into a practical proposal of zoning and code modifications. Now, if I recall correctly, the basis of the existing zoning and code guidance is about 50 years old. In consideration of how this past half-century has revolutionized our living styles and standards, modifications are due, some likely long ago. Now, given the developmental time between those Downtown Vision and Engagement meetings and now, I want to take this opportunity to remind the council of the genesis of this characterization proposal. Long-term and multi-phased projects like this are never really headline news, but they're the products of thousands of hours of public and stakeholder input. The proposal is a case in point, and I hope that it not be set aside as a result of some small disagreements. Provisions for modifications to the proposal can be formally adopted into the proposal if reservations of proposal details can't be compromised. Now, with the refined development of downtown Main Street and the near 15-year expansion onto State Street, the adjacent neighborhoods are poised for new investment. Much of the city's oldest housing stock is located in the Character District, and the new zoning regime will incentivize a time-managed replacement of that stock. With the ever-increasing cost of renovation, the likely alternative is an increasing incidence of dilapidation, which isn't always visible, and conversion to low-cost rental units. This eventuation would represent an opportunity squandered. Unlike many of the distressed communities in our state, those of us in Cedar Falls have a choice in how we plan and manage our neighborhoods' futures. I urge the council to advance this opportunity of initiative. The next generation will benefit from our proactive policies. Finally, I'd like to give a special thanks to Karen Howard for her work on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fennick. Would anyone from the gallery wish to speak in opposition to this item? Mr. Beck, come on forward, sir. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Darren Beck, 339 Golden Lane, Cedar Falls. And to be clear, I'm not, I'm not standing here objecting to the form-based zoning. I just have some comments pertaining to a couple of aspects of it. I think there's a lot of good visionary work down there, and honestly, it's probably a good thing for progressive movement forward, but there's some issues that I personally feel need to be addressed. And as you may have heard, there are a lot of stakeholders in downtown that have become very uncomfortable with the parking elements of the form-based zoning plan for downtown. You will be receiving protest letters tonight from many of those businesses lining both sides of our great downtown this evening. I don't know if you've seen them yet or at what point you will receive them, but there's an astronomical number of businesses on Main Street, both sides, up and down, restaurant, bar, and retail, that are opposed to the parking language in this thing. I hope you'll take their concerns very seriously, and I hope that you can table the plan until parking components of the plan can be debated in an open, honest, and transparent way. Many people feel that the necessary educating of the stakeholders did not take place as it should have. I know some people feel differently, but you're seeing a groundswell of opposition due to lack of information given to the people who need it most. I'm here before you as someone who's been involved in the development of downtown for the past 20 years. I'm not representing Community Main Street tonight or any specific business tonight. I'm here to share my personal opinion. As such, I'd like to remind everyone that if it weren't for the early investors in the Main Street buildings, which many were at risk of being condemned many years ago, and Frank, your wife and I have discussed many of those things that took place 20 and 25 years ago, was the catalyst to all of this happening. The Renaissance of the theater and the Landau's opening montage, if those things hadn't happened, there wouldn't be anyone here tonight to even talk about the parking issue, because there wouldn't be a parking issue. There wouldn't be the downtown that we know and love today. They took the biggest risk, the early adopters took the biggest risks, and I think we, as a city, owe them the infrastructure that they deserve. I have personally spoken to many of the business owners downtown and can tell you many of them feel the way I do. Some of them are here tonight, in fact, that the parking discussion has gone on way too long and has held us back from our true potential in downtown. You may not believe it, but there are businesses suffering in downtown Cedar Falls due to lack of parking. It has also kept a lot of jobs out of downtown. Offices and other mixed uses in downtown need parking, and a lot more than we have now. I have heard the number $5 million tossed around to build a centrally-located ramp. The city just keeps saying no to the additional parking needed for downtown, but I hear discussions about renovating City Hall for $4.5 million, and I think you just approved $3.7 million on the river. I would think that we could find some way of having a discussion on parking for our downtown stakeholders. The reason you don't see very many technology businesses or other professional offices locating in downtown is because there's a serious lack of parking that only the city can resolve. If anyone would like to see more restaurants open for lunch or more days of the week, a built-in consumer base would make all the difference in the world. Those jobs provide that base in most cities like ours that have adequate parking. We need additional parking created. Created is the key word here, for the future vitality of downtown, and we need it now. A ramp with paid parking will work if located properly. Many of the existing businesses downtown will support the ramp, and new businesses would consider locating and coming downtown because of it and also support it. Please table this form-based zoning until a viable plan is on the table that resolves the lack of parking. Maybe the numbers could work on the new zoning, specifically talking about the number of parking stalls per bedroom in residential living in downtown. But I do know, in my mind, that common sense tells me that a half a parking stall for a one-bedroom and three-quarters of a stall for a two-bedroom apartment just don't make any sense in Iowa at this time. Maybe it could work if we had additional parking infrastructure downtown, which gave these residents other options, but those options are very limited now and would take parking away from existing businesses.
30 seconds remaining.
So, I would, I'm almost finished. New zoning with its lower parking requirements on the new development only makes a bad situation worse, so I'm asking you to do the right thing and get the parking right in downtown and quit kicking the can down the road. Only you guys have the ability to do this. So, I leave you with just one simple question. I'm asking each of you that can make a difference, meaning the city council members tonight, where do you stand on providing additional parking for downtown regardless of the form-based zoning? I'd just like to know where each of you stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Does anyone wish to speak on the item in favor? Okay. Anything from Zoom?
Nothing in Zoom.
Okay. So, does anyone else wish to speak just in general for public comment on this item? Mr. Vajpayee, if you'd just give name and address for the record, please, sir.
Eshan Vajpayee, 3831 Conover Lane, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I think that, just to pick off where Mr. Beck landed, we keep hearing that everyone will leave during the day, they'll leave their apartments during the day, and then the workers can come in and park where they went. Remote work? Where are those people going? Nowhere. I mean, it's the same absurdity that we're facing on the Hill, which is that less than one stall per bedroom, because we don't think everyone has a car, and also, no parking for the commercial. So, not even parking fully the residential and not parking the commercial. So, or to a lesser extent than needed, by the testimony of the business owners that Mr. Beck stated, some of these early stakeholders, they're amongst the list of people. And obviously, this is just incredible to me. From Wednesday to Monday, so I represent Ben Stroh, and we've been working with a group of these business owners. And from Wednesday to Monday, take a walk down Main Street, because this is what we got accomplished when everyone finally realized what was up. And by the way, most of them didn't even realize what was going on. The notice that was sent, I got more pieces of paper, Cedar Falls Official Mail, when three lots wanted to turn into two in a subdivision where I own lots than for this. It was a little postcard, looked like junk mail. That's not the notice that's needed for something this big. Take a walk down Main Street with me. 102 Main, 104 Main, 106 Main, 107 Main, 108 Main, 109 Main, 112 Main, 114 Main, 206, 208, 210, 213, 215, 217, 219, 221, 222, 223, 224, 310, 312, 314, 316, 401, 407, 408, 409, 410, 412, 419, 421, 515, 720, 1109, 1010, 1012, 1014, 1203, Main Street. Those protest forums have been emailed, and obviously, they're coming in, staff can't digest them all initially, but that's a big reason to table this, because when everyone realized what was up, Wednesday to Monday. I'm not done yet. 315 West Second and Parking Lot, 515 West Second, 523 West Second, 110 East Third, 521 West Third, 411 West Third, 115 East Fourth, 114 West Fifth, 225 North College, 301 North College, 305, 313, 317 North College, 616 Main, 727 Bluff, 320 Clay, 415, 421, 508, 516 Washington Street. This is not a disenfranchised, angry, ornery group of people upset. These are pillars of the business community on Main Street. Walk up and down with this list, and you'll see the people. Who's missing from this list? The newcomers. The people that own the big high-rises, want to build more of them with less parking, and also, some of the restaurants that they own are missing from the list. They're not going to sign up either. Why would this group, this entire group, just now, I think it's pretty strong circumstantial evidence that just now, they're hearing about this and moving to action, because they didn't hear about it before properly. And when I, and we've been delayed in our efforts. And that's why I think that we should table this, because, at least for one more meeting cycle, because when I asked for the list of every single property in the study district, I got a spreadsheet, very nice spreadsheet, but it was missing the owners' names. So, if they sent one out to every single person in the district, if they sent them out to the owners... the owners, then how come the spreadsheet I got didn't have the owners' names on it after I asked for a fully unredacted version? They know who the owners are, right, because they sent them a piece of mail? Or did they not give me the owners? I'm not going to impugn anybody, but it cost my client thousands of dollars and lots of man-hours for us to go through and figure out everyone who owned these properties. So I think we're owed a little bit more time here. And what's the rush? It's not good policy to rezone every one year, two-year. Oh, let's, let's try this out, see what's wrong. People are going to be spending millions of dollars based on this plan, based on stand, building standards, parking requirements. You can't rezone, change parking requirements every one or two years based on the results of the experiment. Let's take time, because what are you saying to all these people and all these people who protested if you just say not timely, time to move forward, time to push forward? You're benefiting and giving more weight to the importance of stamping and not considering. And two weeks or one meeting cycle is not going to do anything. It's not going to delay till the election. It's going to give people actual time to voice their actual opinions. And honestly, I think the only reason you want to push this forward if you do is because you're scared of what that opinion will be. If we did this between Wednesday and today, if you can't take some time to breathe on this, you're scared of how much bigger this list is going to get. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am, please. Name and address for the record, please.
So Jenny Leeper, currently 1304 Washington Street, but soon to be 205 Main Street. I just want to end the, at least this part of the public comment on a positive note. I want to, first of all, thank you all for what you do. I know it is a oftentimes thankless job, and you hear from us either when we're really unhappy or very satisfied, so I did just want to come up and thank you all and thank everybody who is in the room today to share their opinions. I do think there are different opinions in the room, but I did want to say I really am thankful for the people like the Landaus who are in the room and Darren Beck in the room who did really put their investment into downtown. I'm a newcomer, I was not on the list that was just listed for our downtown building, but I'm down there because of everything that you have done in this community to be progressive in growing our community, in creating a downtown district that has amazing events. The reason I'm moving downtown is because when we first moved up here, we are not longtime Cedar Falls residents originally, but we've been here since the early 90s. It was the girls' night outs, holiday hooplas, art-a-paloozas that really drew us downtown and have made us love what Cedar Falls is. So as you all move forward and, you know, you're all running for office, many of you are running again for reelection or for different offices, I just really want to encourage you to remember all the great things we have happening in downtown. The Riverfront Project, doing eventual or additional redevelopment like that is really exciting for our community. We continue to grow as not only a community but a school district, and we have some amazing things happening in this community. So I know things can get contentious, but I encourage you to try and be positive and civil in your dialogue as we move forward. Please remember that we are stronger together, and we are a great community because we have had great partnerships, whether that's within the city, with the district, with our downtown district. All of us working together is what makes us what we are in Cedar Falls, so I'm just encouraging you to continue to collaborate together to try and find problem-solving issues or problem-solving resolutions to things like parking. I still think we are worth a district that's worth walking for. I like the idea of walking because I find a new business every time I have to walk a few blocks downtown. So again, thank you for what you do and thank you for the time to let me speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper. Anyone else wish to speak from the gallery tonight? Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring it to council, open it up for discussion. Who'd like to start us?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember.
Can somebody explain the packet that was left on our chairs here?
Certainly. So Madam Clerk?
Yes, so, you know, we had the public hearing, and there were opportunities for people to submit communications, and we, we received those last time, I think there was maybe three, and then these came this afternoon, and so too late to put in the packet and typically not the procedure that we do, so generally, we will make copies of those and place them in front of you, so.
Thank you.
And I believe that these are the ones that Mr. Vajpayee was referring to.
That was what I was wondering, if they were the opposition that he was referring to.
Correct, yeah, that matched it. Okay, other questions? Perhaps the staff or Councilmember Harding?
Well, contentious item I see. Mr. Beck raised a good point. It seems like basically we're talking about how can we get more parking for, more public parking for the businesses? And I personally want to have that conversation. I want to talk about whether we can have a public-private ramp and, and get something down there with businesses and make more parking available. I don't, however, necessarily see that this zoning, I, I see it as a separate issue, is, and maybe we disagree there, but I think there's more discussion to be had, and I'm still pretty comfortable with where we're at. I guess the question would be, is it okay, you know, do we as a council want to postpone this, have another committee of the whole, or do something that brings it forward? Or where's the rest of council at with that? I would be open to that, but that doesn't mean I would necessarily change my opinion on where I'm at, but if all the businesses are just now getting into it and they want to be educated, well, we can have another committee of the whole, and we can let them come, and we can then continue to vote and get it done. So I'd be open to that if any other council members are, because regardless of my views on this, I do think that if people want to hear more information, why not give them more information? So I could live by that, but I guess it's not just up to me, so that's just my thoughts.
Councilmember Cruz?
Thank you. I did bring up to echo Councilman Harding's comments, I think it was the August 2nd committee meeting, we discussed parking in pretty good detail, but typically, you get a consensus of some sort, and that meeting ended without any solution, if you want to call it that. And I'm very much in favor of Mr. Harding's sentiments on indefinitely postpone, I think, Mr. Rogers is the term we're supposed to use, as opposed to tabling?
No, indefinite postponement would kill the item, so we would only postpone to a later date.
If, if council wishes to postpone the vote, then there'd have to be a motion approved to postpone the vote indefinitely. It is not debatable.
That goes against Robert's rules. And I understand it's in our, our council rules, but we've had that discussion, that postponing definitely leaves it into the abyss.
No, it, it's precisely the opposite in the council rules. If a, a, a motion to table is the effective way to kill it. So the, the practice we've been using is to move to postpone the vote indefinitely, and then it comes back in the same form just before the vote again.
But when? If you postpone indefinitely, how does it come back up?
As soon as, as soon as the process for placing an item on the agenda is met.
Okay. I, I disagree, but we'll discuss after. So postponing definitely then?
I'd like to continue then. I guess a point of clarification for Mr. Rogers. My understanding is if we have protests of 20% of the land, the focus area, that brings us to a supermajority vote?
The, such a protest would have been due before or during the public hearing on the matter, and that public hearing's already been held. But this is still communication to council on some business owners and residents' feelings on the matter, but it's not a formal protest that would invoke a supermajority vote.
So these guidelines, are they state code or is it city code? Because I haven't been able to locate anything in.
Yeah, it's Iowa Code Section 414-4 and 414-5.
Okay. Okay, that clarifies that, thank you. But then I'll return to my, my thought of, of the parking committee meeting reaching no solution or no quantifiable formula that made sense to generate both public parking, as we've said, and the focus of this is towards public parking, but when we realistically, dramatically underpark new residential condos and that sort of thing, we didn't really gain anything. If we'd have a discussion about the residential additional parking being used for the shop owners or the employees of the shops and that sort of thing, that would make sense, but I think if this is the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this topic and then schedule a committee meeting again to continue the parking discussion, parking ramp, public, private, shared, half a spot, quarter spot, all those topics.
Okay, so it's been motioned to postpone indefinitely?
I'll second.
Motioned and seconded, open for council discussion.
I have a question. Are we not, is it not debatable?
Motion postponed indefinitely is, is not debatable unless council imposes restrictions on it, such as we'll bring it back in a month or two months or whatever the case may be.
But for clarification on a future meeting or additional meeting on it, or what topics that would include, that, that would be a separate discussion.
So it's just to postpone indefinitely and that's it?
Well, to then schedule the committee meeting.
We can't discuss that.
So I make a separate motion then?
That would be a separate motion.
Yeah.
Right.
Clarification for Mr. Rogers. You had just mentioned if we added additional information of when we were going to bring this item back, I would like to solidify when we want to bring this item back. I don't want it to get just postponed indefinitely and then us not bring it back. I want to deal with the issue. I realize it's a, it's a controversial issue, but, but we need to deal with it, and if we need to have another discussion, then we can have another discussion. I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Like I said, I'm, it may not, it may change my mind, it may not, but at least I'm okay with having another discussion.
Yeah, we, we all agree that there's many good things in the form-based zoning and, as some have said, but the elephants in the room, not just one, but several, is the parking, parking ramp, how do you designate or build private parking, public parking, how do you share it, how far away it is? Those topics need to be covered, and if that then, or let me back up. What is our schedule for committee meetings if we want to look at a timeframe? Do we have, I know there's usually things on the calendar for the next couple of committee meetings, and where are we at with that? When would be the next availability for this?
If this is a priority of the city council, we can move things around and make sure that this is on there.
New term?
Yes.
Okay.
So a month?
So.
Two weeks.
What is it, it's October?
Did someone say that this is not debatable, this motion? So we can't, you can't talk, have a logical conversation about this before we vote?
It's debatable as soon as you place conditions on it, and I think I'm hearing conditions.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, bring it back for the second reading in one month. That gives everybody enough time. That's two weeks, we get a committee of the whole, we can talk about the parking, we can air out everything, we can talk about all aspects, and then have the second reading in a month.
So that, that wouldn't be a postponed indefinitely. I don't want to, to get stuck on the semantics, but also I want to be careful that we don't risk having this die and, and not be moved forward, so what?
Mr. Rogers, could you clarify then Simon's comment like that as far as indefinite versus a month?
Well, first, let me, let me just bring up Robert's rules here. It says for ele, chapter 11, "Postpone indefinitely is a motion that the Assembly declined to take a position on the main question. The adoption kills the main motion and avoids a direct vote on it. It's useful for disposing of a badly chosen main motion that either cannot be adopted or expressly rejected without undesirable consequences." So that's where I'm saying, we, to Simon, or Councilmember Harding's point, postpone it, but just have it to, for a month. Does that make sense, Mr. Rogers?
Makes sense to me, sure.
Okay.
Well, not to me. I don't know, can we, can we talk about it or not?
Yes, absolutely.
So Councilmember Darren?
Oh, thank you. Parking's a problem now. We haven't solved it yet. And Darren, I respect and appreciate everything you've done to make downtown, Jim Landau, great work downtown, Brett Johnson, great work downtown. It's what it is because of visionaries like you. We've spent the last six mon, year and a half revisioning to make, to have another 20 years of what you've done down there. And parking has been a problem since I've been on the council, and now we're going to stop, we're going to delay a vision because we have, continue to have a problem. I don't have, I don't have a problem with having a group of me, once we move this thing forward, let's focus on what do we do about parking? Does the city want to pony up and pay for it? Do you guys want to help pay for it to the people who come down and use our downtown? But if we squander this opportunity, this kind of vision to make what you started even better, shame on us. And, and holding this thing hostage because we want to talk more about parking, we're not going to solve it, we'll never get back to voting on it. So we need to keep that, that moving forward with a caveat that we're going to have one hell of a meeting, a whole bunch of meetings, on how we're going to park it and who's going to take care of it. But I, I refuse to sit here and let the hard work Karen and the staff and the scores, if not hundreds of people that participated in the visioning activities for the last year and a half say, "Well, thanks for your efforts, but we can't find a place to park." That's, that's just not, I'm sorry, that's, that's not who we are. So I fear that if we vote to postpone this, some, some other, we're going to get a whole bunch more signatures on things that people don't really have had, don't really know what they're signing. I don't want to say that. I shouldn't have said that, sorry. But now, please don't lose this opportunity. Let's move it forward and then be very purposeful in finding out how do we solve this parking problem. See, it's a great, it's a great downtown, and this installed some good things, so thank you.
Okay, so as I understand it, that we've got on the floor is a motion to postpone indefinitely to the, to the October 18th council meeting, which is a month from now.
Do we not take the indefinitely out of that, and it's just a motion to postpone until then? Isn't that what the conversation just was?
That, but I'm, we have to go off of the motion that was brought forward. Would Councilmember Cruz do wish to withdraw the motion and, and bring it forward again as a motion to postpone until the October 18th meeting?
I guess I'd like to clarify that we would go to the first one in November, if you're going to give a month of discussion.
So that would be?
November.
November 1st? Okay, so it's been motion, it's brought forward the motion to postpone until the November 1st meeting. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded for the, I guess there's no discussion if it's postponed, correct, or is there?
There is, there is. I misspoke when I said.
They will allow discussion.
I misspoke when I said there's no debate and a motion to postpone. There is, there is debate allowed, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Great. So discussion.
Subject to a scheduling of the committee meeting at the next October 4th or October 18th?
Yeah.
That's, or we don't know, we'll just figure that out.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
But real quick, to Frank's point, and I realize that this is, people coming out at the woodwork at the last minute and doing this and that, but, and I, I like the vision plan. I support it. I think that the parking issue that we have is sep, I, I think they're multiple, multifaceted, and it's, 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 it's two separate issues with the zoning compared to public parking, and they kind of are like a Venn diagram in touch, and it's very complex. But I guess my thing is that it's not going to defeat Cedar Falls or defeat. But I guess my thing is that it's not going to defeat Cedar Falls or defeat this to talk about it for another month. It's, it can be painful, and it can be tough, but when I got into this, and I'm going to make my decision how I'm going to make my decision by doing research and talking, but when I got into this, I wanted to make sure that if we did have a last-minute thing, that let's just slow down for one second. In the grand scheme of one month of however many hundred, what, hundred-plus more years we're going to, you know, thousand more years we're going to be here in Cedar Falls, talking about this for another month, it's not going to kill it. We've set a date, we talk about it more, and we talk about all the aspects of the issues of parking, and the people show up, I hope, and they talk about it and they learn, and then at the end, when we do decide, we've talked about it, and let's continue to grow together, and let's continue to go. Whether we fall on this side or that side, we've talked about it again, and that's how I feel. I want to talk about it, but whatever, regardless of whatever side we fall on, I want people to be people, and let's grow, and let's go. So I don't mind talking about it and extending it a little bit. It's not going to kill Cedar Falls to talk about it for a month and a half more.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sires.
Mayor.
We'll get to that after that.
There's a tremendous amount of value in all of these properties that are here, and they have a part of the downtown, and I think it's good that we can wait and have a couple more committee meetings, but the parking is part of our issue, and we need to not reduce the requirement on apartment buildings when we already have a problem with the parking. There are other things, and I had, you know, my big issue is the taking of parking.
Mr. Sires, Councilmember Sires, this is about the hearing date?
This is about all of this.
Delaying the date, so.
And that's what I'm saying.
Councilmember Sires, I want to keep the discussion on what the motion is about, is delaying until?
That's what I'm trying to say. I think a little more time is what we need and a couple more committee meetings because of all of this.
Excellent.
And that's exactly what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Couple of things. I'm not in favor of postponing this. Two years in the making. I don't, I haven't seen the city try to communicate with citizens more on any issue than this, whether it's on social media. I don't know what, exactly what mailing goes out to residents that are affected, but the work has been done there, let alone the meetings that happened, the charrettes, the staff making phone calls, Zoom meetings. I understand that some people, or everybody's busy, sure, and some people don't see things or don't think it's important, or whatever the case may be, but two years in the making. And I guess I'm a little concerned that if we postpone this, what comes out of that? Say there's changes that citizens want. That means, I think, that we have to start this process all over again, to be fair to every resident in the city that participated along the way originally. Is that accurate, Kevin?
Yeah, substantial changes at this point then would take it back to planning and zoning commission.
Yeah. That concerns me. To Kelly's point, the parking study, we had meeting after meeting where we invited the public in to offer their input. We, I think we paid somewhere near $100,000 to hire somebody to come in and say, here's what you can do. We tried to do that, and I made the motion to go backwards on that, to take public parking or the paid parking system out of the lots. I don't know how you're going to get anyone to park in a paid parking ramp if there's free parking on the side of the street. I don't know what the solution is. I understand both sides of it. Some people think that there's not enough parking, some people don't mind walking. But I know Community Main Street, or Main Street itself, would not look the same if there was a parking lot every block. I don't know that we're ever going to solve that problem completely. I don't think it's worth holding this up. I think we've done the work, we've put the notices out there, we've tried to involve the public in any way that we can involve them, and I think we need to move forward with it. Again, mainly because as soon as we open that door up to more conversation, we go back and we start over. I don't want to do that.
Councilmember DeBir?
Well, I like the idea of pending it or waiting and having another committee meeting. I just received, or I've been trying to look through this large packet. I think there's more opposition than just parking. I think there's some other issues that some of these people are concerned about, and I'd like to have the opportunity to hear what those concerns are, and if it means we have to change this zoning ordinance, then perhaps we get a better ordinance at the end, we start back over, we start back over. But I'd like to be able to hear from more about what their issues are and what they want changed in this. So I would like to pen it and then have the committee meetings.
Councilmember Cruz?
The whole point of having three readings is exactly what you see happening here. It's the process, it's maybe frustrating, but maybe it says that the way the public was told about it wasn't really the way to do it, just saying. I've heard people say that we could try it for a year and then see what happens and tweak it. You can't build a building in a year anyway, and then if it's too big, oops, we can't tear off two floors. I mean, you've got to look at what we're dealing with, multiple billions of dollars up and down Main Street, sitting in the room, represented here, and give it its, give it full daylight, and everybody understands it well. So I think it's not going to hurt a thing. To the kiosks and the parking that was said, there, I've talked to merchants that they thought the parking discussion was over because of getting rid of the kiosks. But then we go to the next parking discussion of a half or a three-quarters, or so many parking spots 600 feet away, and it's a different discussion than the kiosks. So I thought that was interesting revelation, and the parking experience is going to vary depending on the type of store, retail, shop, restaurant that you have, so there's going to be multiple topics there, or feelings and experiences. So I made the motion, let's continue on.
Well, that motion's already made.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
Last thing. To Councilmember Miller's point, I get it. I mean, honestly, I'd prefer to vote on it tonight, but then, then I always ask myself the question of, you know, did we talk about it? Could we have talked about it again? And, you know, the answer is that even if, even if we vote on it in a month and a half and it goes through, at least it's like, well, we talked about it one last time. Yes, these people came forward at the end, a lot of them. But I do agree with Darryl in the sense that this is what the readings are for, it's there, we'll do the research. It's a painful process, I'm not going to lie, it is painful, but there's nothing wrong with doing due diligence and making sure that we cover all our bases. And for me, that's going to cover more bases. So it's tough, but I'd say we vote on the motion at hand.
Mayor?
Yes.
To your point, Simon, I understand the tough. We have the process, to Darryl's point, that this takes three readings. This is the second reading. If it would pass, there's still another two weeks in there to understand any particulars that people have. That's the process as well. So I'm all in on the process working as it's supposed to, and hearing people, whether it's the last minute or not, I'm all in. I want to hear, as long as this process is open, it's open table for anybody to come and speak and say what their issues are, and we see if there's a solution. We've heard from Community Main Street, we've heard from several business owners here apparently tonight. I don't know exactly what the issues are because it's a pretty bland petition here, but I'm interested in understanding what the issues are, and if there's any way we can modify, then we modify. But we continually do this, right? We get to these really hard decisions, and then we postpone, or if somebody doesn't like the solution, I mean, that's the frustrating part about the parking consultant, is we had a checklist of things that we were given, hey, we could try this, we can try this, we can try this. And we immediately heard from some people saying, no, that isn't going to work, that isn't going to work. At some point, we have to make a decision, and people aren't going to like it, some people aren't going to like it, some people will, but that's our job sitting up here, is to follow the process and make a decision. We could postpone every issue that comes here. And I guess for myself, we follow the process, we do our diligence trying to get there and be visionary and involving the public in any way that we can involve them, and everybody has a responsibility to play a part in that. And at some point, we, the elected officials, have to make a decision, and they're not easy, and I'm fully aware of that. But I also, we can push this down for a month, and we can push the next topic down for a month, and we can push the next topic down for a month. We've got to make decisions.
We do, and we tend to not push things down the road, and I don't know if we know when the last time an ordinance was even postponed in the history of Cedar Falls, not since I've been a part of council, which is short, but not since I've even been attending, so.
We overturned the parking ordinance.
Well, I'm, yeah, touche. I just want to do it right. I want to hear from everybody. You know, there's no right or wrong, but we can debate it all day long, but it's probably just time to.
I don't fault you in any way for wanting to talk more and understand more, and I get it, but for myself, we've done, we've done the work. We've talked, we've, you know, we've set up one meeting for, to cover residential, commercial, downtown parking, paid lots, side streets. That's going to be a long meeting, and I don't know what comes out of it.
Councilmember Cruz?
I'll throw in something that really hasn't been discussed a whole lot. I know a time or two it's come up, but I look at the character district definition, I guess you'd say, defined geographic area in a specific location, either within the same building, same parcel, and so on, but in a pedestrian-oriented, transit-supportive, compact, walkable form. We have no transit-supportive downtown city, we have no subway, we have no bus system that's every 10 minutes you can jump on and go somewhere. The density concept and the half a parking spot for form-based zoning is and has been applied in big metropolitan areas like Oak Park, Illinois, which is a suburb of Chicago with 9 million people, Cambridge, Massachusetts, with 8 million people, in Boston area, Sacramento has 2 million people, Miami, Florida, 6 million people.
Councilmember Cruz, can you direct this back to the postponement date?
I mean, the point of the parking and debating this issue is, is what has been said so far, is it relevant to Cedar Falls in a way that, you know, the people understand it? And obviously, people have jumped up and said, hey, let's, you know, protest. So to Simon's point and what I've said, it's like, let's, we got their attention. Let's, you know, have a good committee meeting, two if we need to. We got time for two more in here before November 2nd, 1st.
First.
First.
Okay, thank you.
But moving this forward does not preclude ongoing conversations about how do we solve the parking problem, does it? If we move.
That's a, it sounds like a rhetorical question.
So you agree? Well, it doesn't, and I'm all for, you know, how do you plan parking if you don't have a vision for what it's going to look like eventually anyway? So approving the proposal does not mean we can't have an honest discussion about how do we solve this parking problem, and everybody's got to participate. The city's got to, like I say, pony up, and developers and property owners probably have to give a little too, to meet the demand, if there is such a demand. But like Mark says, two and a half or two years of getting to this point, you know, and then all of a sudden, it's not worthy of moving forward. We know there's problems with it, but it's going to be a couple of years before development occurs, so let's solve the parking in the interim. I just, delaying it is, to delay it makes no sense to me.
Okay. So it sounds like we've heard the different perspectives here? Any final words? Okay, so I don't often interject into the deliberation, but from my perspective, seeing that this is, the last time the zoning ordinance was changed was 1970, last major change, so 50 years to now, this zoning change could easily last another 50 years. So I don't see a concern with delaying a month for additional discussion, and that was one of the things I'd heard about in the past, was with the roundabouts discussion, was not so much the vote itself, how it came out, but the fact there was a very large meeting with a lot of information that came forward, and the vote was taken that night. So to have time to process and to gain information, I think there's value to that, and then particularly seeing these letters, there's significant dissent from what we'd heard from Community Main Street, and so I think that certainly is worth investigating. So that's my two cents. I don't get a vote. So with that, it's been motioned and seconded to postpone this item until the December 1st meeting?
November 1st.
November, excuse me, motion and seconded to change this to November 1st meeting, and this is a voice vote, correct? And so all in favor of postponing to November 1st, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so I'll need a show of hands for aye. One, two, three, four aye. For nay, one, two, three. So four voting aye, three voting nay, that does postpone the item to November 1st. To Councilmember Cruz's point, we will have the committee discussion for that scheduled well in advance of that, at least one committee discussion, and that, of course, will be open to the public as well. So with that, I believe.
There's still a possibility, though, a vote will still be on the next agenda?
No.
We're postponing it for two weeks.
We're postponing, we're postponing this item forward, so the second reading until at least November 1st.
Right, so we, there's a possibility of still voting again on November 1st?
On November 1st, yes.
Yeah.
There's a definite vote on November 1st.
That's all I asked.
Okay, okay. I thought you said the next meeting.
It's not just going to be a discussion, but this, we'll go through this process again.
Yes, just kind of puts it on a freezer for a moment.
Mayor, is that putting six and seven on, or do we have to make the same motion for number seven?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I think that makes seven moot, so if there's no objection, there's, would council consent to having that as the same item? Or are we even allowed to do that, Mr. Rogers? Do we have to vote on it?
So, so there has to be another vote.
Okay, so we'll run through this with a motion, and then we can do the same postponement then, motion as well. So item seven is a motion to pass ordinance 2995 amending Section 26118 of the Code of Ordinances by removing all property within the defined boundaries of the downtown character district from the current zoning districts and placing the same in the CDDT downtown character zoning district upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded?
Motion, don't we need a motion to postpone it until November 1st and continue it with the committee meetings?
Yes, so it's been, it's been motioned to delay this item to November 1st, and to include that with the committee meetings, so.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion? Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On November 1st, yes.
Yeah.
It's a definite vote on November 1st.
That's all I asked.
Okay, okay. I thought you said the next meeting.
It's not just going to be a discussion, but this, we'll go through this process again.
Yes. Just kind of puts it on a freezer for a moment.
Mayor, is that putting six and seven on or do we have to make the same motion for number seven?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I think that makes seven moot. So if there's no objection, there's, would, would council consent to having that as the same item? Or are we even allowed to do that, Mr. Rogers? Do we have to vote on it?
So, so there has to be another vote.
Okay, so we'll, we'll run through this with a motion and then we can do the same postponement then, motion as well. So item seven is pass, is a motion to pass ordinance 2995 amending section 26118 of the Code of Ordinances by removing all property within the defined boundaries of the downtown character district from the current zoning districts and placing the same in the CDDT downtown characters zoning district upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded.
Motion, don't we need a motion to postpone it until November 1st and continue it with the committee meetings?
Yes, so it's been, it's been motioned to delay this item to November 1st and to include that with the committee meetings. So.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion? Okay, so it's been motion and seconded and all in favor, say aye.
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 So, did I make a mistake?
What's the motion?
So the motion, just like the last one, is to postpone this one until November 1st as well.
Keep them together.
So, motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so a show of hands for aye? Just so we can get on the record, one, two, three, four, five. Nay? One, two, just two. Okay, so that does pass to go into that next meeting as well. Or the November 1st meeting. So we are postponed on that and that takes us over to new business. Under the consent calendar, the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Is there any items that the council wishes to pull from eight to 10? You're seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item eight to 10 in the gallery? Or on Zoom?
No, on Zoom.
Okay, so I will read those items. Eight is receiving and filing committee of the whole minutes from September 7th. Nine is approving a request for a temporary sign at 2207 Vine Street for the, and that's for the North Cedar fundraising project for Center Street. And that begins on September 21st, 2021. And then item 10 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes and takes us over to resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. So does council wish to pull any item 11 through 17 for a separate discussion? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item from 11 to 17 for separate discussion? Also seeing none there and on Zoom?
Seeing on Zoom?
None also. Okay, so I can read those really quick. It's a short one. Item 11 is a resolution levying a final assessment for costs incurred by the city to mow property located at 130 North College Street. 12 is the same for 1227 West 22nd Street. 13 is the same for 2208 Coventry Lane. 14 is a resolution levying final assessment to clean up and remove debris at 2716 Waterly Road. 15 is a resolution approving and authorizing submission of an Iowa tourism grant for digital advertising. 16 is a resolution approving a central business district overlay zoning district site plan for facade improvements at 215 Main Street. And then finally, 17 is a resolution setting October 4th as the date for a public hearing on the proposed rezoning from C1 to RP properly located in the vicinity of Cedar Heights Drive and Valley High Drive. And also on an associated amendment to the future land use map by changing the designation from Office and Business Park to medium density residential. Is there a motion to approve these items?
Second.
Motion and seconded and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. 18 is allowing bills and claims for September 2021.
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion? Okay, then it's been motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any council referrals tonight? Seeing none, then do we have any updates? Also seeing none and I'll go over to staff updates then.
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That was short. So at this point, the council is going to have a motion to move to executive session to discuss matters related to cybersecurity, information and records pursuant to Iowa code 21.51K and Iowa code 22.750. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So move.
Second.
The motion and seconded and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we will move to executive session. If anyone wishes to stay in the gallery, you won't see us, but we will come back briefly to adjourn. So if you do leave, thank you very much for joining us tonight and we look forward to seeing you and at the first meeting in, in October. Thank you.